Call this December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, regularly scheduled City of Port Orchard. Council meeting to order. And would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll just get moving. We have quite a thick packet and quite an agenda for tonight. So we'll start right off on item two, and that's citizens' comments. I'd like to remind the citizens that you don't necessarily have to identify yourself, but if you want an answer from us, it's a pretty good idea to give us either an email, a phone number, or a name or something. Nobody signed up for citizens' comments, but we always ask for you to raise your hand. Yes, please, come up.
Last council meeting, Nick Whittleton, excuse me, I forgot to say that last time, too. Nick Whittleton, Port Orchard resident. At last council meeting, we had the first reading of the budget, and I was just assumed that there'd be a second reading of the budget, but I see it's on here for adoption tonight. The storm water budget, the revised budget that was put in after the preliminary budget, it doesn't look right to me when you have something that goes from a couple thousand dollars to ten thousand. Doesn't seem right. Just because you got the money doesn't mean you have to spend it there. There was a miscellaneous fund that went from fifteen hundred to fifteen thousand. I would have liked to have heard someone from the Finance Committee say, "Why?" But nothing. So I don't understand. I'm expressing my opinion. I don't like it. I don't think it's right. And it appears as though the money is just being dispersed into little funds here and there to use it up to justify the fourteen dollar increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else? Last chance? Yes, sir. Please come up.
So I'm just coming to address a little situation that we had on Friday for the Christmas lighting. My son came across a picture, I guess it was an advertisement at this Rose Nail Salon, and it was a pretty obscene picture from, you know, what we've saw. And my wife, on Monday, went to go speak with the owner of that salon, just to ask her if she could at least turn the picture around so that our children or anybody else's children wouldn't have to see that picture. But she said she wouldn't. And my wife went to the City Hall to speak with somebody to see what could be done in order for the picture to at least be turned around, not to necessarily be taken down, but if she could have that advertisement inside her place of business, but not to where the public could see it on that walk in the streets. And the lady said, her name was Ms. Kathy Woodside?
Yeah.
She said that according to you guys' code, that signs containing statements, words, and pictures of an obscene character, those are the ones that would have to come down. So we were just trying to figure out what obscene means, you know? Is that, can that be more clarified, you know, more clear to what obscene means? So that's what we wanted to address today.
So did the, Ms. Woodside, did she say this picture was obscene? Did she see the picture?
She was not able to see it. Before we got here, actually, my wife took a picture of that advertisement. If y'all would like to see that, I have that available.
Who decides if something's obscene? Is it Kathy Woodside, or is there a definition?
It's defined in your code. It's defined in your code, so I would recommend that Ms. Woodside contact me, and we can discuss it.
Okay.
And that we keep this on a code enforcement level at this point.
Yeah, we are looking into this, so we'll have a resolution shortly.
I am with him. Ms. Woodsdale did say she was looking into it. I spoke with her yesterday. Yeah, yesterday. But she just said we could come here and let you guys know our concerns publicly, and just hopes that this could be more defined. I know that obscene is different things to different people, but our eight-year-old, you know, we have to explain that image to him. So it is important to us, and I'm sure probably to other people in the community whose children may come across that. It's pretty obscene to me, and my husband does have the picture if you guys would like to see it.
Can you email us the picture so we at least know what we're talking about?
Well, it's on my phone, and it doesn't, we don't have, like, a smartphone or anything like that. But Ms. Woodside did say that she would take pictures after she came off of leave and, you know, go from there. So, I mean, I could pass this around, but, you know, that's up to you guys.
What's your pleasure?
Look at it.
No, thank you.
Why don't you go look at it, Brad?
I'll go down to the store and look at it.
Yeah, it's a Rose Nail Salon, right up the street here. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to add an item to the consent agenda. Would like to move to authorize the treasurer to pay the city claims and provide the claim register at the next council meeting in January. Allow the treasurer to be able to pay the bills through the end of the year.
You need a second?
I believe so.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add another item to the consent agenda, and that item is to authorize the treasurer to...
Pay claims through the end of the year.
Pay claims. Any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Anything else? All right, now we're at the main motion approving the agenda.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
No, it's the agenda.
Approving the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any other discussion? All right, and seeing none, we're going to be approving the amended consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, and that is presentations. We do have any presentations scheduled, so we'll move on to item six A, a public hearing. Public hearing and adoption of ordinance concerning development agreements. Mr. Bond, could you tell us about this one?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The city is working on a project with unique circumstances, and staff wishes to present a development agreement to the city council for consideration as a solution to the challenges faced by members of the development community. RCW thirty-six seventy B one seventy authorizes the city to enter into development agreements. However, the city hasn't adopted local regulations concerning the process for considering development agreements, the application requirements for those seeking a development agreement with the city, or the process for handling appeals. The interim city attorney recommends adopting the attached ordinance prior to considering a development agreement. The ordinance is recommended regardless of whether this proposal goes forward, so that the benefits offered by the ordinance are available to everyone. Council should not discuss the specifics of any one project, but rather the merits of having this type of ordinance in place, and the recommendation is to open the public hearing and approve the ordinance upon completion.
Thank you. I will hereby officially open the public hearing. Nobody has signed up to testify in this particular instance. However, once again, I'd ask you to raise your hand, be identified, come up, and make your testimony. Please.
Members of the city council, mayor, my name's Gary Anderson, Port Orchard, Washington. And I reviewed the ordinance concerning development agreements, and I applaud you for including this in your agenda. You know, there's a lot of property owners, including myself, who've gone through a great deal of expense and time to get projects approved for platting purposes, or for other purposes. It could be commercial or residential, doesn't matter, only to find that the market didn't really make it possible to sell it and develop it, or do what you wanted to do with it. And the development cost for a lot of projects is extremely high. And so if the city is going to take an attitude that they want to assist the property owners by helping them along, by establishing development agreements, and particularly the phasing part of it, that allows property owners to phase through a project, work their way through it to make it more financially feasible to do so, that's a big plus for the people in this community. We don't have an abundance of large developers coming in to develop these properties, and so we rely on the small-to-medium-sized builders and developers to do, you know, to develop property. And they're not flocking to do that. They usually look for the smaller projects, which is maybe an acre in the city, or two acres where they can break out about five or six lots that's affordable. They're not overextending themselves and subjecting themselves to potential financial harm if the downturn in the market occurs. And, you know, the value of finished lots, unresidential lots, is not to the point yet in South Kitsap where people are jumping in to develop plats and provide lots for builders. So I like the idea of what you're doing here, and I support it completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify? All right, hereby close the public hearing. And let's see here, let me find my place. We'll move on to public hearing B, public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On six A, I move to approve the ordinance adding section sixteen point nine zero, Development Agreements, to the Port Orchard Municipal Code.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second regarding public hearing and adoption of ordinance concerning development agreements. Open for discussion. Comments? Seeing none, we're going to be voting on the public hearing adoption of ordinance concerning development agreements. This is before you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Okay, now we'll go on to item B, public hearing and adoption of an ordinance concerning building permit extensions. Mr. Bond, tell us about this one, please.
Thank you. Currently, building permits are issued invalid for a hundred and eighty days. The permits are extended automatically for an additional hundred and eighty days every time a building inspection occurs. Occasionally, the city issues building permits for site improvements such as water tanks, sewer pump stations, and retaining walls, which are associated with the site development activity permit. Often, the developer wants to pick up all their permits at one time to develop the site over a period of years. In some cases, significant site work must be performed prior to doing any work on a structure subject to a building permit. When work has not been performed on a structure, the building permit expires after a hundred and eighty days, and a new permit is required. This is the case even though a site development permit is valid for three years and can be extended for a full five years. It is the desire of the department to allow for building permit extensions and extended building permit approvals in cases like these whereby the building permit can be extended so long as the site development activity permit is active. The attached ordinance would provide the director with the authority needed to tie building permit expiration to the expiration of an underlying site development activity permit in select instances. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance and opening of the public hearing.
I hereby open the public hearing. Once again, nobody has signed up for the public hearing, but please raise your hand, be identified if you have testimony for this public hearing.
Mr. Anderson, being a developer, have you read this one as well?
I support it.
Six B, you support it as well? Okay.
All right, I hereby close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
I move to approve the ordinance amending section fifteen point oh four point one oh one oh of the Port Orchard Municipal Code concerning building permit expiration.
Okay.
Mr. Bond, my question, so this is more related to land activity versus, because if you've got an active building, you know, structure being built, a hundred and eighty days between inspections is probably more than adequate.
Yeah, this wouldn't apply to residential home construction, but it would apply to plat construction or major, you know, public improvements needed to serve a large development.
Discussion or comments? Ready to vote on public hearing, or public hearing and adoption for ordinance concerning building permit extensions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number seven, business items. And we're on seven A, second reading and adoption of ordinance zero seventeen fourteen. Mr. Martin, could you tell us about that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor Mathis. Members of the Port Orchard City Council and citizens of Port Orchard, this is the second and final reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number zero twenty-nine thirteen adopting the two thousand and fourteen budget. This budget amendment ordinance recognizes amendments approved by council action during the second half of the year. The budget amendment ordinance reflects the following: two thousand dollars from current expense fund for fertilizing hanging flower baskets; ninety-eight thousand dollars for prisoner boarding and medical expenses; six thousand eight hundred dollars for equipment outfitting and new police vehicles; nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for sales tax for city parking fees paid to the Washington State Department of Revenue; five thousand six hundred dollars additional costs for the new telephone system; thirty-six thousand dollars for SmartGov cloud computing; a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to purchase six forty Bay Street; seventy-three thousand five hundred transfer from Water Sewer Utility Fund to the Water Sewer Cumulative Reserve Fund; fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars for the McCormick Village Park; two hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred dollars wages and benefits current expense; thirty-five thousand nine hundred wages and benefits street fund; five thousand eight hundred dollars wages and benefits from Criminal Justice Fund; fifty-three thousand seven hundred wages and benefits Water Sewer Fund; nineteen thousand six hundred wages and benefits Storm Brainsage Fund; and a hundred and six thousand additional revenue sales and use tax. The county finance committee recommend, the council finance committee recommends adopting ordinance number seventeen fourteen amending the two thousand and fourteen budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm going to adopt ordinance number zero one seven dash one four, amending the two thousand and fourteen budget for the City of Port Orchard.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the two thousand and fourteen amendment to the budget. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, then we'll be adopting this motion number zero seventeen fourteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're at B, adoption of ordinance, adopting the two thousand and fifteen budget. Mr. Martin, could you lead this into the record for us?
Thank you. The mayor of Port Orchard completed and placed on file a proposed budget, an estimate of the amount of the monies required to meet the public expense, bond retirement and interest, reserve funds, and expense of the government of the city for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. As required, the city council held a public hearing on revenue sources for the coming year's budget, including consideration of possible increases in property tax revenue. The Finance Committee met independently to study the proposed budget and held budget interviews that required the presence of department heads. Input was sought from the full council. A final hearing seeking public input on the proposed budget was held November twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen. The two thousand and fifteen budget does not exceed the lawful limit of taxation allowed by law to be levied on the property within the City of Port Orchard for the purposes described in the two thousand and fifteen budget, and the estimated expenditures in each fund are all necessary to carry on the government of the city for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. The two thousand and fifteen budget reflects department head requests, mayor's priorities, citizen comment, Finance Committee, and City Council input and modifications. The recommendation is that, from the City Council, Finance Committee recommends approval of an ordinance adopting the two thousand and fifteen budget for the City of Port Orchard for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance adopting the two thousand and fifteen budget.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Our discussion and questions.
I'm seeking some clarification, and I have basically three questions. I will assume that Mr. Martin would be the one to answer the questions. But it's my understanding that, basically, I'm seeking clarifications on expenses associated with the extension of our pedestrian path. It's my understanding that the grant the city received is a reimbursable grant, meaning that the city pays any expenses up front and then seeks reimbursement for those funds. So my first question is, are we able to cash flow these expenses that we may have in two thousand and fifteen within this budget?
The answer is, in the affirmative, yes, the budget is written to do so.
Thank you. At the November work-study session, I inquired about redesign cost for the pedestrian path and also demolition cost, and if these could be included in the city's matching funds for our grant, because I believe our grant requires us a thirteen point five percent match. And so my question is, are these, if we do any redesign work or any demolition, can those costs be recovered or paid through our matching funds? And if not, if we can't pay them out of matching funds, do we have to account for expense for any of this money in our two thousand and fifteen budget?
The answer to your first question is, it is a reimbursable grant, which is a dollar reimbursement, and they do not, on this grant, allow for what it would be called an in-kind contribution of the city. So it's, we pay the payment, and they reimburse us the amount. So there's no in-kind or other equity provided for.
Can, if we have redesign work to do, and we will have demolition cost of the overwater structures, can we pay for those expenses out of our matching funds?
No.
If we cannot pay for that out of matching funds, do we need to account for any of those expenses in our two thousand and fifteen budget?
There is no, the two thousand and fifteen budget does not provide for any additional expense on that section other than using the grant proceeds for right-of-way or property acquisition. So no demolition and no design.
I don't know that it was proposed that there would be any demolition in two thousand and fifteen.
Or redesign work.
I can't speak to that.
That, Mr. Potts is correct. The budget does not contemplate that, but your question was, did it include it? And the answer is no.
Right, it didn't include it, and I guess this really doesn't have to do with the budget. This is just my personal bias, is that, my personal bias is, before we use any of the grant money, I think that we need to have a real clear, defined cost estimate and funding sources for the pedestrian path as we move forward.
Your comment will be duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other comments? All right.
Well, I do have one. I've been kind of going back and forth about how I feel about the budget, and the reason was that last year, I had some kind of heartburn over how lodging tax funds were dispersed, but I decided I wouldn't use that as a reason to turn down the budget. But this year, there's some more things, and, you know, I feel like I'm leaning towards voting no on the budget, and let me tell you why. It's because I think that monies that we've allocated on certain things have not, are not wise use of monies. For example, the lodging tax, as I said, we've got forty-three thousand more dollars this year to distribute, and my thought on that was, why distribute it when seventy thousand was plenty for all the participating groups previously? But we're going to go ahead and spend that money. Six forty Bay Street, I'm not happy with what's going on with that. And the part of that concern with six forty Bay Street is the capital facilities element, where it's defining the costs on that as two hundred thousand now. And I don't know, it just seems like a lot of these projects that we're entering into, whether it's the wafering science or six forty Bay Street, well nine is kind of just, it's a runaway project that hasn't even been addressed our problems. And I just would like to see the council kind of rein in loose spending, maybe that's the way to say it. There's money that it could be better spent, and that we should care more how it's spent, and that's what's bothering me about this budget. So I think I'll vote no. There's enough votes to pass it, and I think that's just a protest that I have about how we spend money.
Mr. Charles, I believe the six forty Bay Street was in this year's budget, and that's what we amended. It has, it's not in...
Well, the capital facilities element is calling it a two hundred thousand dollar impact to the capital facilities plan. And what I'm referencing that for is because I see it as a project that started out under fifty thousand, hey, we can get this property for this, then it's going to be that, and then it got up to a hundred and sixty, and now I see this two hundred thousand number referenced in the capital facilities element. And I just feel like that effort is going to go like some of these other efforts, whether it's, there's no end, and there's no controlling how that money's being spent. I'd like to see bids, or when we do these plans, and whether it's signs, or whether it's buying that building, that we have set costs, and that these costs can't just escalate and go up and go up and go up. I just think it's a kind of a waste of money. I think that the downtown, for example, the wafering science, one problem I had with that was, we don't have a downtown waterfront plan, and so the necessity, so it's kind of like the cart before the horse, I know I'm re-saying the same thing, see, heard before, but the necessity of doing that, and then we have a website that everybody would probably agree is very unattractive and not inviting, and it doesn't look very professional for our city. You know, that would be twenty or twenty-five thousand. Wouldn't that be more useful use of those monies? Even LTACs, and, you know, the nonprofits are using LTAC money for a website, you know, maybe we could use some of the LTAC money for a website, bring some money out of the general fund, and actually do something that we all feel is wrong. So I just feel like we're not doing a very good job of setting the priorities and spending this money, so it's all freaking me out, and it's bothering me.
Any other comments? Any other? Yes.
I have a question also. I see in the amendment for the two thousand and fourteen budget, a hundred and forty-eight thousand for six forty Bay Street, and I'm wondering also why we're seeing that same project totaling two hundred thousand dollars in Business Item seven C. Since we're dealing with the budget now, why the difference?
The budget authority is for a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and that's what the purchase of the property is for. When we start, for you to use real estate excise tax for this purchase, it has to be included in the comp plan. So as a placeholder... So as a placeholder, when we started this process, because we were coming near the end of the year, and we had a deadline to meet to put it in, quite frankly, staff rounded up to $200,000, because we weren't really sure at that time what the council was going to decide to pay on 640 Bay Street. And we didn't want to end up short, because the comp plan, it has to be in the comp plan for us to use the REIT money, or we would have been short of having the legal authority to spend the money. The only money that's legally set by the council to spend is $148,000. The comp plan isn't a budget.
Yeah, and the other thing I'll add to that is, if you look in the capital facilities plan, those are all round numbers, and we don't want to have to go through the process of amending the comp plan if we have an additional cost, such as, you know, wanting to install secure fencing around the property after we've purchased it, or if, you know, if something occurs on the property that we need to deal with, that money is in the capital budget, and our expenditures would not exceed what was in the comp plan.
I think we need to recognize here, we're dealing with Item B, which is the budget, and we keep pointing to Item C, which is the comp plan amendment, and 640 Bay Street was dealt with in Item A, which is when we authorized to spend that money, not in Item B, and the comp plan amendment is Item C.
Correct, I understand that. I just wanted to know what the discrepancy was, because that's a $52,000 gain.
It's an appropriate question at the next business item.
Well, we're going to be voting on this now, Rob, and so, you know what, in order to have clarification on something I'm voting on now, I need to have this explained. Thank you.
Any other comments on Item B, 7B? All right, seeing none, and we will be adopting, voting on adoption of ordinance adopting the 2015 budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
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 Director Shaw, there are two opposed. Now, motion carries. Okay, we're Item C, adoption of ordinance amending city's comp plan, capital facilities element. Mr. Bond, could you tell us about that one, please?
Yes, thank you. The 2014 and 15 budgets include funding for projects which are not currently listed in the city's capital facilities element, including the Bethel overlay and grindouts project and the 640 Bay Street purchase. In order to comply with RCW 3670A 120, the City Council should amend its comprehensive plan, capital facilities plan element, to add these projects to the capital facilities plan. Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 1605020 allows for amendments to the capital facilities element more than once annually in circumstances such as this, when the amendment occurs concurrently with the adoption of the budget. The Port Orchard Finance Department has requested that an update to the 2012 capital facilities plan be adopted by reference in Appendix G of the Port Orchard Comprehensive Plan. This amendment would add the purchase of 640 Bay Street and Bethel Road grindouts and overlay project to the capital facilities plan. The recommendation is to approve the amendment as written, or the ordinance as written.
Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending the city's comp plan by, or as submitted.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I open the floor to discussion.
Well, I guess I got one question. What does the 19, well, the $1,900,000 include? What projects?
So the...
The Bethel Avenue grindouts. I know we had $350,000 or so we put in the budget last year, we never did the project. Now we have $700,000 for Bethel Lund, which, I understand that completely. What, so that's part of it, probably, right?
Yeah, yeah, the total, the total project cost for the entire Bethel Road overlay and grindouts is the 1.7. We're not spending all of that in 2015, but it needs to be in the comprehensive plan, because it's a multi-year project. And so this will ensure that we don't have to amend the comp plan next year.
So that's just for grindouts? That's not for widening or anything like that?
Yeah, that's just new pavement and removing the, you know, settling areas.
Comments? All right, then, we'll be adopting or voting on adoption of ordinance amending the city's comprehensive plan, capital facilities element. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Director Shaw, there's one in opposition. That motion carries. Okay, adoption of ordinance renaming, repealing, and adding funds to the 2015 budget. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Mathis. Members of the Port Orchard City Council and citizens of Port Orchard. From time to time, the city establishes or repeals fund designations to improve their usefulness and understandability of government fund balance information, and provide more clearly defined categories to make the nature and expense of the constraints placed on a government's fund balance more transparent. The Budget Accounting Reporting System, which we call BARS, requires common terminology and classification consistently throughout the budget, the accounts, and the financial reports of each fund. Finance staff worked with the Council Finance Committee to identify adjustments that will make Port Orchard's financial condition more transparent, help council identify priorities, and allow for the use of finance best practices, including BARS requirements. The 2015 budget process contemplated the following changes. Community reserve for municipal facilities is split into two funds that separates real estate excise tax accounting from capital project accounting. The capital construction fund will account for and report financial resources that are restricted, committed, or assigned to be expended for capital outlays, including the acquisition or construction of capital facilities or other capital assets. The real estate excise tax fund, funded by a quarter percent tax, described as a first-quarter percent of the real estate excise tax, or REIT 1, and a second-quarter percent tax, REIT 2, will be used to account for and report specific REIT revenues and expenditures. The ordinance authorizes a storm drainage capital facility fund to account for storm drainage service rates approved by ordinance number 01514, and contemplated for the storm drainage utility capital improvement program. The wastewater treatment facility expansion fund is renamed the wastewater treatment facility fee fund, and is properly recognized as an agency fund. An agency fund is used to report resources held by the government in a purely custodial capacity, assets and liabilities. The city collects and holds wastewater treatment facility fees for the South Kitsap Water Reclamation Facility. Currently, the designation is that of an enterprise fund. So staff recommends adoption of an ordinance aligning the 2015 budget with the appropriate fund designations. Thank you.
The council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve an ordinance establishing and renaming certain funds, recognize GASB goals of allowing for better understanding of city financial resources.
Second that motion?
We have a motion and a second. We open the floor to discussion or comments.
Alan, the municipal facilities is split into two funds. Okay, I get that, but then down below, it talks about the real estate excise tax fund, and then you're describing the first quarter percent as REIT 1, and the second quarter percent is REIT 2. Does that mean we're going to have two REIT funds, or just one?
One REIT fund, and you will see reports now that'll have the REIT 1 revenue and the REIT 2 revenue within that fund, but it'll be accounted separately, because what you're able to spend those on are specific to the two statutes that provided for those over two different authorizations by the legislature. Prior to this point, there was enough money in the REIT fund that, you know, it wasn't really, we really didn't focus that closely on it, but as we're going through and we're, you know, doing different types of things now, and being a little bit more progressive, it's going to be much better to be able to track those REIT funds and see how those are drawn down, or the revenues as they're collected.
That was required by BARS?
It is, it is, and we actually break it out for accounting purposes each year for the state auditors when they come in. So within the fund, we do track it. We've just never, at the fund level, gone this far. So we've grown to the point that we need to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to be voting...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do have a question. Maybe, Alan, if you could explain the changes to the wastewater treatment facility expansion fund, just so people understand what's happening there.
Well, actually, we had, it started out as the fund that carried the construction of the plant, and at that time, it was looked at as an enterprise fund, somewhat a fund for the facility. For the past number of years, it's only been used for the surcharge portion that we set aside for use for the plant itself, and under the definitions of funds and fund balance, it is shown as an agency fund. So we're aligning it to be transparent, and that's how we need to report it each year on our financial reports, as an agency fund, rather than an enterprise fund. Does that help? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I will say that I did work with Councilperson Patonsu on REIT 1 and 2, and...
Give me a very lengthy memo.
You're welcome.
That I read.
Okay, last chance for comments.
Now, I might say one other thing, that somebody might say is, well, where are these new funds in the new budget that you just approved, and how come I didn't notice this? It's because they're non-operating funds, and if you look at the ordinance, non-operating funds are lumped together. So on this ordinance, they're not broken out, but when you get your copy of the budget book, it'll be very distinct that's that, and I will work with the Finance Committee to make that very transparent, once we get into 2015.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Nope? Seeing none. We're going to be adopting or voting on adoption of an ordinance renaming, repealing, and adding funds to the 2015 budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That carries. Okay. Adoption of a resolution confirming mayoral appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Ms. Reinerson, could you tell us about this, please?
So annually, the clerk reviews the expiring terms of members of the various boards, committees, and commissions. Shannon Childs with the Design Review Board, Lorraine Olson and Dr. Nancy Isabel with the Animal Control Appeal Board, and Gil Michael with the Planning Commission have indicated their interest in continuing to serve in 2015, as their terms will expire December 31, 2014. The mayor has appointed the following persons to the boards, committees, and commissions. Shannon Childs to the Design Review Board for a term expiring December 31, 2017. Gil Michael to the Planning Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2018. Lorraine Olson and Dr. Nancy Isabel to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term to expire December 31, 2017. Mayor Mathis recommends adoption of the resolution confirming his appointments as presented.
Mr. Mayor, before you get to that point, I'd like to suggest that I recuse myself. I know all the people on this, that you've nominated there, but one of them quite well, and so feel that I should recuse myself. I don't know, does that mean I leave the room, or just go out and have a drink? I'll be back a little bit later.
You know, I know we've kind of, we kind of, I use your term loosey-goosey on this, but when you do recuse yourself, I think technically you should leave the room. So you're not in...
He'll go up there and he won't listen.
Because you're married to Shannon, is it?
It could be.
All right, yes, Mr. Chan.
I move to adopt a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments to the Planning Commission, Design Review Board, and Animal Control Appeal Board, as set forth in the resolution presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, we're opening, we'll open the floor for any comments or discussions.
I would just thank all of the citizens for being willing to serve.
Very good, yes. All right, then, we'll be voting on the adoption of confirming mayoral appointments to boards, committees, and commissions as read into the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes, carries. Thank you. And if, yes, we can get our...
I have to say, I've never recused myself before, and it's really not much fun out there, so I don't have to do it again.
All right, we're in Item F, approval of contract authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Clerk Reinerson, could you tell us about that one, please?
Yes. So for several years, the city has contracted with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, Governmental Affairs, to provide lobbying services for the city. Notable successes have included monies appropriated for the DeKalb Pier project and the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway, as well as legislative changes relating to the Planning Commission. Gordon Thomas Honeywell has also provided regular updates to the council and city staff regarding legislative issues. The current contract expires December 31, 2014. Gordon Thomas Honeywell's fees for 2015 is $3,245 per month, and total expenses not to exceed $2,500 during the term of the contract. The proposal presented includes an increase of $95 per month, which is a 3% cost of living increase. The mayor recommends the council authorize him to execute an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, Governmental Affairs, for lobbying services for 2015.
It's your pleasure, yes.
I move to approve the contract, excuse me, and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for lobbying services with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, Governmental Affairs, for the period of January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $41,440.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, and we'll open the floor for discussion or comments.
I've got a little bit above where we're providing the summary, we're talking about per month, and down below, where we're talking about the motion, we're talking about per year. So it seems like if we were, wanted to put those together so we could kind of evaluate where we're going with this, it would seem like they should both be one or the other, just saying. The other question I had was the $2,500, the total expenses not to exceed $2,500, does that mean that we pay $32.45 a month, plus expenses which can not exceed $2,500? I mean, is that what that means?
For the entire year, so...
$2,500 expenses for the whole year?
Yeah, and I think year-to-date, they've probably expended, I think, $1,100, $1,200 of that $2,500.
Okay.
Usually, it's just phone calls, gas reimbursement, those are the typical expenses that are calculated on the monthly invoice.
If you multiply $32.45 times 12, and add $2,500 to it, it totals $41.40.
Okay, any other comments, any other questions with this motion? We'll be approving, voting to approve contract authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Business Item 7G, approval of contract authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Kitsap Humane Society for Animal Control Services. Ms. Reinerson, could you tell us about that one, please?
All right. So as an integral component of the city of Port Orchard, oh, wait, wrong one. That's not me. Sorry about that. The city has contracted for animal control services with the Kitsap Humane Society since at least 1999. The current annual amount for this service is $36,804.45. The proposed contract contains a 3% increase from the current rate for the first year, and each remaining four years at a cost of 3% per year increase. The proposed increase is mainly due to the increased cost of shelter expenses, medical expenses, and administrative expenses. Other major changes to the contract are in Section 12, which is the insurance section, and there is an increase of the minimum required amount, and this is to be updated to be consistent with the recommendations... with the recommendations of our insurer. The other item that was changed was in Section 4, which is regarding compensation relating to the cost of the impoundment of animals beyond 30 days due to the judicial system requiring the retention of animals for evidence. The increase is from, excuse me, the increase is to $20 for domestic animals, which I believe currently it's 15, and the domestic animals, the increase to $20 for domestic animals and 40 for livestock. Staff recommends the council to authorize the mayor to execute a five-year contract with the Kitsap Humane Society in an amount of $39,300 for the first year, and each remaining four years at a 3% cost of living increase per year, with the contract commencing January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2019.
Okay, yes, Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a five-year contract with Kitsap Humane Society in the amount of $39,300 for the first year, and each remaining four years at a 3% cost of living increase per year, with the contract commencing January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2019.
Second.
A motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion or comments.
Just a comment, it seems kinda funny that we're paying our lobbyists more than we pay the Humane Society.
I have a question.
Brendan, a couple of years back, maybe, maybe it was more, maybe it was four or five,
the Humane Society came before us, it was probably when this contract was done, Bremerton was making some, making wholesale changes to the way their service was provided, and is, has any of that dialogue gone anywhere, or was any, I thought it was kind of a good idea, actually.
Some of the cities, when we sat down to negotiate the contract, the mayor and I with them, they have expressed that some cities are interested in pursuing that, where they take full control of licensing the animals, it's a per-monthly fee, it's a upgrade in their tracking system, and I thought from previous discussions from the council that they weren't interested in increasing our animal control contract, or animal control licensing on an annual basis. So, right now, it's for the lifetime of the pet, unless they are not spayed or neutered, then it's $75. So, if we were to go into that change, it would, they would issue all the licensing, they would be requiring the citizens to renew annually, and so if that's the direction that the council wants to go, we can address it with them.
Well, they also would set the rate. We wouldn't have any input on the rate.
Yes, because, yes, they would set the rate on the cost for the animal licensing, and they balance it out through their, all of their expenses.
But then, in turn, though, we wouldn't pay this $39,000. It would be the pet owners paying for the service.
Well, we'd pay something, but we don't know what. Exactly, yeah, you're right. It would be some kind of a combination of a formula, you know.
Bremerton go that route?
I believe they're still in the process. They haven't gone 100%, yeah.
Okay.
I think they're still working it out.
Yes.
My only thing was, I was looking at the numbers, and I saw that for the first year, it'll be a 3% increase, and so I, just using those two numbers, it seemed like the increase is around 7%. So, I was trying to figure out whether the numbers are off, or I just should go back to remedial math. I can, 10% of 36,000 is like 3,600, and you cut that in half, it's 1,800, so that'd be 5%. But the actual difference between those two numbers is 2,495, which is closer to 7%. So, I just wonder if these numbers aren't quite right, or, but...
Hmm. The 3% would take that to $37,909. Let me look at their current contract here.
So, the percentage error, there's a percentage on the error, so when we sat down with the negotiations of Humane Society, they wanted to be brought up to where they should have been a couple, where they should have been in 2014. In 2010, they were getting a 3% annual increase, and in 2010, the former administration renegotiated with them, and they held it from 2010 to 2014, so they have not gotten an increase in the last three years. So, when we sat down and went through the negotiations, they said, we want to be brought up to where we would be, and so, I apologize, 3% is an error. However, they are interested in wanting the $39,300 where they would be in 2014 if we did not stop the annual increases a couple of years ago.
So, I have a question. We stopped the annual increases, or it was negotiated? I don't understand.
It wasn't included in the contract.
So, if we didn't have a contractual agreement to pay annual increases, then they're trying to make coal for four or five years, or whatever it was, when the rest of the economy and the rest of everybody else was holding costs down and not giving colas, and, you know, I negotiate contracts too, and when the labor unions come to the table and say, we want to be made whole for the 8%, we didn't get years back, we said, well, join the club because nobody else got it either. So, I'm gonna have a hard problem with this one. I don't mind locking in 3% for four years in the future, I actually think that's a pretty good number, but I got a tough time making whole for years, years in the past when everybody else did too.
Other, other comments?
It wasn't made clear.
And in that meeting, they also provided a, which was another reason why they wanted to go up to the $3,900, if this is helpful, is that they provided a financial reporting as of 2014, as of June 30, and there was a deficit. So, what they were trying to do is, they projected what it would, what the deficit would be at the end of the year, based on our, the City of Port Orchard expenses only, and so that's where another portion of that numbers came in, is they were trying to make sure that going forward in the next four or five years, that they would have a steady increase to help offset some of their expenses, and that's where the medical expenses, the cost of the shelter increased, so that was kind of another offset, and I apologize, the staff report was not very clear.
One of the, in their Exhibit A, they say that we get a quarterly report to reflect their activities. Do we get that?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Can that be made available to the council?
Absolutely.
They also indicate that right now, they will continue to pick up deceased animals from public roads, but they're reserving the right to perhaps change that with an amendment. They also, this, this additional fee for animals that are held over 30 days, do we have any idea how much that normally is? It's $20 a day for domestic animals and $40 for livestock. That is in addition, I'm assuming, to this $39,000. Do we have any idea what that number, you know, is?
The last, as far as I'm aware of, there hasn't been any additional cost. It would only happen if, if the animal control took a dangerous animal, or an animal, and the court said, hey, you gotta maintain this animal for the evidence. So, the last five years that I've been here, that has not happened, we have not incurred any expense.
So, it would be animal abuse, it'd be a case, that would be one example.
That would be an example, yes.
They'd need to keep it for, keep the animal for evidence in the abuse case or something.
Correct.
Brendan, do you recall during the negotiation that they mentioned the annexation of the city area? That since we had a larger area, perhaps that's, that went into consideration with our contract?
That was a part, part of it too, as well, there's more ground to cover with the Bethel and the McCormick Woods.
McCormick Woods, yeah, okay. What does Bremerton pay? Palsbo, I don't, Bainbridge, or anything.
I don't know. Oh, I see. So, as of June 30, 2014, the contract with the Humane Society with the City of Bremerton was 102,000. Bainbridge Island was 29,840. City of Port Orchard at the time was 18, if that's not right. Palsbo, 13,000, and Bangor, 8,415, according to the Humane Society.
Did that have to do with, going to Fred's point, did that have to do with the number of citizens, or the number of square miles, or something? I mean, how they determined that?
When we spoke with them, and we looked at the reports over the last couple of years, because we were thinking, you know, a lot of it was annexation, and although the annexation had some small impact on the overall budget for them, that wasn't the main cost where it's coming from. It's from the administrative costs, the shelter costs, the medicines. So, when you look at the numbers over the last couple of years, even with Bethel annexation and the, well, and the McCormick Woods annexation, the counts didn't go up. So, we're still holding own, we're still holding our own for pickups, callouts, I mean, they've all been consistent in the last couple of years.
Well, to Jeff's point, I think another problem is the, in other words, they want to make up money that even though it wasn't in the contract, other people were doing things. Another problem we have is now we're paying 3% on that amount going forward, which will make it considerably more, and it wasn't even in our contract, so I wish there would be a way to kind of negotiate that little discrepancy out of it. I don't know how everybody feels.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with a 3% increase, I just think we're setting the bar too high on the first year, and we're gonna have a roll-up effect, it's warranted, given, given the state of affairs where all the municipalities went through in the last five, six years, so, anyways, that's my position. I'm sorry, John, I think, I think I spoke over your raised hand.
Mr. Clausen.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand, this 39,300 is the annual amount they would be at had they received a 3% during the term of the contract.
Sounds like it.
So, it's just going up to where they should have been, but not making up necessarily what they didn't get for the last three years. If that makes sense.
Yeah, the difference is...
Well, that wasn't in the contract, that's what they didn't get.
Correct.
From, from the 36,800, which is what I'm assuming we're currently paying, to the 39,300 is about $2,500, and for me personally, I don't think that's enough to delay not approving the contract.
I not only agree with you, but it's also, they're kind of the only game in town, unless you guys want to get your truck out.
Yeah, it's true, too.
And I guess maybe I should clarify, so in, in 2009, we, the council approved a five-year contract, so it was effective 2010. In 2000, and in that contract for 2010, it said a 3% annual increase. So, if we would, had never amended that contract, in 2014, we would have paid $40,217, which currently we're paying 36. So, back in 2011, we asked them to hold it for the three years, so, you know, they came in, and originally, we were thinking it was gonna be higher, they came back and said, well, we did our numbers, we're asking for 3,900, which is about where we want to be if we didn't.
39,000, yeah.
Yeah, 39,000, I'm sorry. That's where we would be to offset our deficit, and moving forward, we want to stay consistent, we want a 3% for the next five years, so that's kind of, it was in the contract, but we came back, asked them to amend it, and they did.
We asked them to amend it because, basically, the economy was awful.
Correct, yes.
And they did, and now they want it back. Okay, you know, that actually sounds different than what I heard earlier.
If I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, how long has this 36804 been, been the annual amount?
Since January 1, 2011.
Well, then, okay, then I'm okay with this 39, because if I take 36804 and I multiply it by 1.03 twice, you get 39,000. It's only two years, they've been out for four. We're basically splitting the difference, so I'm, after some quick and dirty math, I'm like, I'm okay.
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Thank you.
I guess if anything, and I'm gonna vote for this, because I think it's the best deal in town, but if anything, I would be more concerned with guaranteeing a 3% increase over the next future years, which we're all nice and warm and fuzzy about the economy today, but hopefully, it continues. If it doesn't, we're still obligating to 3%.
The last time our cost of living was 3%, wasn't it? This year, 2.2, I mean, actually, 2, or something like that? 1.9?
But, you know, it's, I understand where they're coming from, because they have, it's more of an increase in the cost of doing business, more so than the cost of living. As they've indicated, the cost of running your shelter, the cost of medication, things of that nature, has probably gone up to where, if you average that all out, it's probably 3% or more. So, I'm fine with it, but like I said, if there's anything that I'm a little concerned about, but I'm gonna vote for it, is guaranteeing something into the future when I don't know it.
Well, I'm fine for it, too, and I liked your last explanation, because it finally says that they actually did something to help us, and they were just asking for that money back, and that's really what the KETA did, that they said everybody had cut back, and now they were asking that we kind of return to the pre-2009 levels, and that's what the Humane Society's doing. So, when you present it that way, it really makes a lot more sense.
And they really do a good job.
Right, yeah, I guess we could talk about that, too.
Any other comments? All right, then, we'll be voting on Business Item 7G, Approval of Contract Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Kitsap Humane Society for Animal Control Services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, that motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to Item 7H, Approval of Statutory Warranty Deal, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Statutory Warranty Deal for Closing on 321 Maple Street Acquisition for Well Number 10. Andrea Archer Parsons is here today to tell us about this one. Could you, could you do that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and citizens of Port Orchard. As an integral component of the City of Port Orchard's Environmental Protection Agency Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, or EPA/DWSRF federally funded Well Number 10 project, the acquisition of the 321 Maple Street property will greatly benefit the overall project through, one, a public health benefit by providing a safe water main alignment and realignment away from the currently failing roadway, and removing a potential slide failure zone immediately above a viable city water source; two, safety improvements associated with the realignment, reconstruction of Maple Street to residents at the top of the hill; and, three, a value engineering perspective whereby the cost to geologically explore, design, and construct a lengthy and tall retaining wall along Blackjack Creek, if a permit could be obtained, would be exceedingly cost prohibitive. As a reminder, since the pending acquisition is a function of an EPA-funded project, the acquisition process did comply with the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act. At this time, staff recommends that the council authorize the mayor to execute the statutory warranty deed for the purchase of 321 Maple Street as needed for the Well Number 10 project.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Patonsu.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the statutory warranty deed for the purchase of 321 Maple Street as needed for the Well 10 project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open the floor for discussion and comments. Discussion, comments. All right, seeing none. We're gonna be voting to approve Statutory Warranty Deal, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Statutory Warranty Deal for 321 Maple Street. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion passes, carries. Thank you. Okay, we're at seven, let's see, approved, no, we're at seven, seven aye, Approval of November 12, 2014, Special Counsel Finance Committee Meeting Minutes. A pleasure.
I move the approval of the minutes.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, then we're going to be voting on approval of the, November 12, Special Counsel Finance Committee Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
We have one abstention.
And let the record show there's one abstention and-
There was not present.
That motion carries. Thank you. We're at item J on our agenda, approval of the November eighteenth work-study session meeting minutes.
Approval of the November eighteenth work-study session minutes.
Second it.
Can we have a, a motion and a second? Is there any other corrections, additions? Seeing none, then we'll be voting to approve the November eighteenth work-study session meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
One abstention.
And let the record show that Mr. Patansu abstained, and that motion carries. We're at discussion item K. It's the Good Neighbor Awards. Ms. Rinderson, could you tell us about that, please?
So historically, the council's been touring the city and awarding citizens, businesses, and neighborhood awards since nineteen ninety-five. The awards are typically presented at the council meeting in January of each year. Last year, the council was unable to tour the city, but did encourage citizens to submit photos of residential homes, businesses, and neighborhoods' best holiday direction, decorations. Staff is looking for direction as to whether the council will meet to tour the city and determine who has the best holiday decorations.
What's your pleasure, council? Do you have a direction for staff?
Well, is the council willing to go out and tour again?
It would depend where-
Don't everybody jump up at once?
I'd be up for it.
Can I get your dad?
It can be fun, but it would depend when it is for me, but that, that's fine.
Okay, let's see if we can find a time.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll try to find a time and then remember, if, if we have a little lead time, we'll be able to get our new van to use. So you'll be a little more comfortable than, in the past. But we have to have time, lead time, so we can get it. Presumably, it'll be in the evening.
That would be the best time to look at the lights.
Yeah. Okay.
Assumption.
Well, that way, we'll be able to use the van, too. We won't, we won't have a conflict with the vans.
Historically, we've used a transit van. It's a large transit van.
That's it, right?
The city's got a van, too, so.
Yeah.
Are we doing calendar checks?
Mm-hmm.
Evening of the twenty-third.
That's a good, good question.
It is a regular scheduled council meeting, and if you wish to hold a regular meeting, we can do that, or you can cancel it, or you can substitute the tour in place of the regular meeting.
I would suggest substituting a tour in place of the meeting.
Good idea, unless there's any major agenda items, are there?
No.
I think we applied that cancel.
I like that. That works for me.
That works for others? Okay.
I can make myself available.
And do you want it, the start time to be seven, or do you want it earlier?
Well, I think we could go earlier.
Yeah.
Probably let's do it earlier.
Earlier six?
Five-thirty or six?
I would say five-thirty. It's pretty, it starts by then and then we can-
We've got a lot of distance to cover.
Okay.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Necessary notices out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Does that give you guidance?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, we're at item L, adoption of ordinance adding new chapter nine oh nine. Ms. Morris.
The city attorney's office will be presenting this tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
This is a, a public defense ordinance, RCW ten one oh one oh three oh requires the city to adopt public, or, uh, public defense standards, whether the services are provided by contract, assigned council, or public defender office. The Washington State Supreme Court adopted new standards for indigent, indigent defense. That includes misdemeanor caseload limits and certificates of compliance effective January one, twenty fifteen. This ordinance will establish chapter nine point oh nine public defense services in the Port Orchard Municipal Code in compliance with state law and Washington State Supreme Court standards. As the council adopt an ordinance establishing chapter nine point oh nine public defense services in the Port Orchard Municipal Code.
Okay, thank you. Questions, council? What's your pleasure, Congress? Yes?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign an ordinance adopting chapter nine point zero nine public defense services in the Port Orchard Municipal Code, setting standards for the delivery of public defender services, including misdemeanor caseload limits and certificates of compliance, all as required under state law and Washington Supreme Court standards.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion and comments.
So this is projected to cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars more a year if we use the same firm?
Correct. Negotiated the contract yet, but that's what they're estimating. And that's because of the four hundred per year caseload limit. So they're projected to exceed that by roughly a hundred cases.
Is this caseload limit defined by the number of our cases or by the total number of cases an attorney can handle? Because I know this particular firm provides public defender service for the county. So would they take both the caseloads from the county and the cities to make sure that they don't exceed the four hundred?
Right. If they're, they're covering more than one jurisdiction, they'd be required to adjust their caseload limits for each jurisdiction, jurisdiction, so they can't exceed the four hundred limit.
So, and I know we're getting into negotiations here, but do we know that because of our caseloads, they would be obligated to hire another? Or is it a combination of all of their contracts that's going to force them to hire another?
In preliminary discussions with them, it sounds like it's going to be a combination of all the jurisdictions going to require another attorney hire.
So maybe we don't have to pay a hundred percent of the thirty thousand.
Uh, I guess that remains to be seen.
Mr. Martin, was this, this particular expense included in our twenty fifteen budget?
And that is an excellent question, and your treasurer's memory is foggy on that. And I, I'm afraid to say, but I think we did.
We did.
Oh, there you go.
I guess my question, are we, do we have the authority to go out for a rebid? Or are we still under a contract that would preclude that?
Currently, we're on an auto renewal. So right now, they're on a two-year auto renewal.
To give a, I'd, I'd have to pull up the contract, but typically, it's either three months, six months notice, and then we'd have to go out for an RFP, that type of thing.
One thing I was thinking is, I mean, they want thirty thousand dollars, but there is no paperwork here kind of justifying the thirty thousand. I mean, I, I know it's the four hundred case limit and all that, but there's nothing here that, kind of spreadsheet of this is this, and if you have that, this is, and it comes up to this number. We know it doesn't come up to thirty thousand exactly. So, I mean, what does it come up to and how did they, and this is, again, not very concise. It's just a round number thrown out.
Remember that this is adopting the standards that the RCW lays out. The next piece of this puzzle will be the negotiations that occur that will tell us some of those things.
And I believe the court administrator has been tracking all of that and probably has the spreadsheet that you're probably wanting.
I would hope so if I sit down with them, because there, again, if we're a small percentage of the need to hire another person, I wouldn't want to pay a hundred percent of another person.
I'm willing to bet that an attorney doesn't cost thirty thousand dollars. Our thirty thousand represents a share of the attorney.
I'm sure that they're probably thirty-two thousand or somewhere in that neighborhood.
So we have to approve this right now, huh?
Adopting the state law.
It doesn't sound like we have any alternatives, but-
An RCW.
It would be nice if we knew that we could negotiate or we could compare with other law defenders to see if we're getting a deal in the next step of the negotiating. Not now.
Right, because this is simply-
Just doing nine oh nine and that's it.
This is simply-
Adopting the code.
Is adopting the code. This has nothing to do with the negotiation or the money involved with it.
This is sets of standards, and then we're going to find out how much it's going to cost to meet those standards, which is face to.
Yeah.
All right, that's a good point.
I believe the next step would be to, to go over the contract and see what the contract says and come back to the council and discuss it. Maybe at a work study, wouldn't that make sense? So that you, you're fully aware of what the options are available to the city. But I appreciate your work on getting us a code so quickly that matches the RCW or that, that covers the RCW. I appreciate that. And I also want to thank you for the other work you've done on those other codes that, we're definitely needy codes. We needed to clean them up, so thank you.
That's great. Yeah, I'm on board.
Anyone else? All right, then. We will be adopting the ordinance adding a new chapter nine point zero nine to the Port Orchard City Municipal Code, setting standards for the delivery of public defender services as required by RCW ten one oh one zero three zero. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we, we have a motion, I mean, a business item M, and that's to authorize the treasurer to pay claims.
No, that was added to the consent agenda.
Oh, was that added to the consent? I, I added it both places. I've got it here on the bottom of the agenda, so, okay. We took care of that. All right.
It's real important.
We're at reports of council committees.
If you want to take a peek.
And let's see where we're at. Finance committee, Mr. Claussen, yeah, Mr. Claussen.
We have not scheduled a meeting yet, so it'll be determined.
Economic development, Ms. Ashby.
We did not meet in December, and we will be meeting again January twelfth, here at City Hall at ten o'clock.
Thank you. Sewer advisory, public property, Mr. Cartwright, I mean, Mr. Patansu, sorry.
I don't-
How about utilities?
It's utilities.
On utilities and sewer advisory.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
Utilities committee-
Utilities is sewer advisory.
Utilities did not meet in December, meeting January ninth. Sewer advisory, last contact we had with the folks from West Sound was here at our last council meeting when we got the budget, budget presentation. Next meeting for the sewer advisory committee is February eighteenth.
Thank you. Public property, Mr. Cartwright.
We did not meet in December. Our next meeting will be January twelfth at eight-thirty here at City Hall.
Thank you. Lodging tax advisory, Mr. Chang.
Nothing to report.
Waterfront vision subcommittee, Mr. Charles.
Nothing to report.
Festival chimes and lights, Ms. Lucarelli.
That meeting is to be determined. We're going to have a wrap-up meeting in January, but we still don't have the date.
You want to give us a report on how it went?
Um, yeah, I will, with the committee reports.
Okay.
I thought that was the committee report.
We aren't, but this is.
Committee reports. No, I was going over meetings. I thought we were going down meetings first.
Oh, you're gonna have-
Okay, so I can give a, a report right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It was fabulous. The Festival of Chimes and Lights, we figure between five and six thousand people actually were present for that. As usual, the community came together, the organizations came together, and it was just a one wonderful event. We had the, the marching band came forward and the tractors were going. There was an amazing display of lights, and we're just so grateful to Public Works for how well they, they decorated our city. We had so many comments on how beautiful it looked this year with the additional lights. So we'll be letting Public Works know how, what a great job they did. And we are grateful also to Kitsap Bank for their generous contribution. So we're very happy with it, and we're working on next year already. Thank you.
All right. Just the announcement, the last one, work-study session, December sixteenth. It's still scheduled, and let's see here.
Outside committees?
Yes, outside committees. And let's see, we'll start with Ms. Ashby. Do you have a report?
The KRCC has not met since our last meeting, so there's nothing to report there, except I just kind of want a clarification from the council, since this was my first year, and I am our representative on KRCC. That's two years, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that, because I'm also an alternate to the PR, PSRC's trans-pall meeting, and the KRCC was getting ready to confirm those positions for next year. The other thing, and, and the trans-pall meets this coming Thursday, which I will be attending that meeting. I also attended the Kitsap Transit, it was this, I don't know the name of the committee. It was a special committee that gets together every four years and reviews the makeup of the Transit Board membership. The committee got together last week, and we made no changes to the Transit Board membership. It will remain as it has these last four years. And for those of you that don't know, it's a nine-person board. It's required they be elected officials. The three county commissioners are part of the board, the mayor of Bremerton, a council person from Bremerton, and then from Bainbridge Island, Pauls Bow, and Port Orchard, it can be either the mayor or a city council person appointed by the council. And there is also a labor representative, and that is a non-elected, but, but they are there. And we maintain that same membership for the next four years. And I believe that's my report.
Can I make one small correction? It's actually ten members if you include the non-voting member.
Oh, it's, it's ten if we include the non-voting member. Okay.
That it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Cartwright, do you have anything?
The Kitsap Economic Development Alliance Board will meet, what day is it? It's Tuesday? Thursday, up at the county building, and that meeting will be at three, which I'll attend as our representative. But also at five, they're having their annual Christmas party, where I know the council and the mayor are welcome to attend and just enjoy a little fellowship with the other dignitaries from the community and from the county. I was going to add one thing to council member Lucarelli's report. The honorary tree lighters for the Chimes and Lights were Mark and Cindy Sparks, who are the owners of Omahondro, which has moved into the community. I know Cindy's shaking her head because she knows what I'm going to say. We wanted to honor them because they honored us by moving their company with sixty employees to this community, and it's a big deal with KETA. It's a big deal around the county, and it's, it's good to show a company and companies that we have in, in the city that we appreciate them, and we appreciate their business and them being here. So we were able to do that, and they were amazed at the downtown. They were amazed at the little charm of a little community that could have thousands of people in the street. And, you know, I, somebody was telling me that the Tacoma had their tree lighting, and it was very sparse. And here we are, a little town of thirteen thousand, with the streets full of people and bands and the, the like. So it was great. And I, I'll just mention that we had John come up and tell his story again. We introduced him as the godfather of Chimes and Lights, and he did a nice job of just giving us a brief, keeping people in the know and understanding why this festival came about in the first place and, and how important it is to the community. So I'll just say that. That's all we got.
Oh, and you're going to talk about Jingle Bell, or no?
Um, yeah, I will talk about you. That was, started in the afternoon, a little bit earlier than we normally started. But before I do that, is there any other committee reports? Yes?
Mine isn't a committee, but I would just like to add on to the Chimes and Lights. It was absolutely incredible. I think this year was the best ever all around. I mean, the decorations were incredible, the crowd was huge, the participation of the crowd, I was amazed. Mark and I were standing back there with our chins down here when the entire crowd was singing carols with the little kids that Jerry corralled up there to- was singing carols with the little kids that Jerry corralled up there to sing. So, it was more than just people standing out in the street waiting for the lights to come on. It was, it was pretty impressive. So, you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Well, all in all, the whole day was pretty impressive. The Jingle Bell Run went off without a hitch. There was, they raised over $55,000. There was, the amount of runners was down just slightly, but we had beautiful sunshine, actually, for part of the run, and no rain in any part of the run. And I don't believe there was any rain at the Christmas tree lighting either, so if you remember, last year it was bitterly cold, and with wind chill, I bet it was below zero. So, all in all, it was a great day in Port Orchard, and it really highlighted and showed what kind of, you know, commitment this town has and how much fun it can have. So, I was really proud of the town and thank everybody that came to town and came downtown to enjoy themselves. Now, I have, for my report, I have some good news to report and some not-so-good news, but I want to start with the good news. So, I have three things I'd like to read quickly. The first one is about Officer Sergeant Maine, and I've kind of just highlighted the parts that get right to the subject. I have been working with Animal Control, KAR, regarding the incident in the park out at McCormick Park, and that was a dangerous dog. I don't know if you remember that. It scared several people, and I know there were several comments made to me that they were afraid to go to that park with their puppies, with their dogs. So, Donna Maine did some work on this, and she, regarding this incident, and together with Animal Control, they were able to locate the owner of the two dogs that attacked Mr. Rogers and his small dog. The owner of the dangerous dogs was placed under arrest and received a criminal citation, failure to control a dangerous dog. And so, basically, I just want to tell the public out there that thanks to good police work and good follow-up work, the park, at least in that particular instance, is a safe place to walk and to take your dogs. So, I want to take my hat off to Sergeant Maine for good follow-up work and thank her for that. I just received this day before yesterday, and it's great news as far as I'm concerned. Let me read it. "My name is Christine, and I work at a customer advocacy website, NerdWallet. I wanted to share some local news that I thought you might be interested in sharing with your community. In our second annual study, we wanted to discover which Washington places were the best for young families. We examined public school ratings, median home values, monthly homeownership costs, median household income, and income growth. Port Orchard ranked 16 on our list with a great school rating of 7 and a median home value of $269,300 for 2012." And she's attached a link, and I'm going to put it on our website, and you can get the full report, but that is, in fact, really good news. I was glad to hear that. So, we're number 16 on their list, so happy about that.
If they were there Saturday, they would, might move that up a bit, huh, John?
Good. Okay, now, we've, you know, Port Orchard's gone to cats and dogs on this last report. This is about a cat-napping. Yep, it's true. There was a cat-napping here in Port Orchard not too long ago, and Sergeant Holden had quite a lot to do with sorting this thing out. And let me read you what happened. "So, last night at 2, we get a knock on the door. It's the police. He told us that our cat had been stolen, but he's perfectly fine. I guess some drunk guy pulled into our parking lot and saw Merlo, called Merlo over, and scratched, and snatched him, then drove down to 7-Eleven on the opposite side of Bay Street and got pulled over. It is a little confusing to me, but somehow the officer found out that the cat, let's see, found out the cat possibly belonged to these folks. I can't thank the officer enough. I hadn't even realized he was outside." Anyway, great police work. The little cat was returned and probably won't be able to escape anymore. They're going to really be watching him, so... But anyhow, it's just the kind of force that we have that will take time to help children and help animals as well as help everyone else, so I'm very happy with that. Those are the good news pieces. I wanted to talk to you tonight, though, about some not-so-good news, and I just want to bring your attention to the fact that some time ago, we had a discussion about councilmen using their other work or their personal email accounts to conduct any kind of city business, and I just want to draw your attention, and I think everybody has read the Bainbridge Island situation, and I want to, again, ask that we work together and do, and stop using other email accounts other than our city email account for city email. It's just very important that the city maintains control for public records requests, and I don't see how we can do it if we continue to use, you know, other business email accounts or, and/or personal email accounts. It just, it gets to be a problem for our public records officer and myself to say that we really have control. I don't think we do, and I think, I'd like to ask you all to start using your city email address for city business only. It just would make things much simpler if we get the same kind of public records request. So, it's, you know, we can't afford not to, in my opinion, when we get $500,000 judgments thrown at us for doing the very thing that I think we've done in the past. So, hopefully, you can work with the public records officer and myself, and we can get training and get new equipment or whatever it takes to get those city websites working for you, but...
They're going to have to redo that website completely, because that doesn't work for anybody.
Well, I don't mean websites, I mean email addresses.
They're going to have to redo that, as well.
Yeah, the website will work on, but the email addresses, some of you told us the last time that they didn't work for you. We'll figure out why they're not working and make sure they do work.
We need more software, but let's bring it to the next work study, because I think we certainly share your concerns. We need the resources to be able to access our city domain email on our other devices. That's the issue. The issue isn't us using other domains.
Correct.
Well, actually, it is, Fred. It's us being able to control those other domains. If somebody asks a public records request to the city of Port Orchard, it's going to be hard for me to, for instance, go to a bank's server or another business's server. I mean, easier to go to your servers, your personal email server, because we ask you to go produce all of the emails.
I think we should discuss this in detail the next city.
Yeah, and I think we need our technical guru be there, too. And, but, you know, it's very important to me that we don't do anything that gets us in this kind of situation, so...
I think we would all agree with you, Mayor. We don't want to be in that situation either, but we want a system that's going to work.
Right. Well, we have, we have to then work together to come up with a system that will work.
Agree with you more.
Yeah. Great, okay. So, we'll put that on the next work study. That's basically my report. I will go to the report of department heads. Okay, Ms. Parsons.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Martin.
I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention tonight, but I have one clarification that is probably under the prosecuting attorney contract piece, but on that cat incident, would he be a cat burglar?
Yes.
So, if somebody could come up with that answer, I'd appreciate it before the end of the year. But the city is, has its exit conference with the state auditor's office scheduled for December 23rd at 8:00 a.m., and the council finance committee has agreed to attend as the mayor and some of the major department heads, and we'll have that annual audit closing, and I know of no controversy related to the 2013 audit. I might also mention that I'd like to thank tonight, just because we're done with our budget process, I'd like to thank the mayor and his support over the past, really, four months as we put together, the mayor and the confidence that he showed in me and my staff and the directors to work through some of these weightier issues this year as we try to move the city forward. I'd also like to thank Chairman Clausen and the council finance committee, who last year, through all of the year, was very supportive of the things that I've tried to accomplish and the directors and the different issues that we've brought forward and for, really, the due diligence questions that you've all shown. I do believe that our meeting that we had with department directors was probably one of the best that I've participated with since I've been with the city, and we had a full complement of folks that day. It was a long day, but I think the level of understanding of the budget, at least from my point of view, as you all, as elected officials, is the greatest I've seen it, and I can say that that gives your staff a great deal of confidence, because we're all in this together, and a lot of times, we as directors make recommendations, and we want you to be fairly com, very comfortable with what we put forward and have that joint understanding. I'd also like to thank the directors and their staff. They all came through with excellent information and data, and Nick's doing an excellent job, and we're getting great information out of his office that we didn't have in the past, and that's been a great deal. And then finally, I'd like to thank the staff of the treasurer's office itself. Those folks would succeed and do well in any chosen field that they choose. There's an excellent staff down there. They have a great attention to detail, and they make it all possible, and any, what little success I've had comes from their hard work. So, thank you very much, and I'd like to, at this time, thank you all and say Merry Christmas and the best for 2015. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bond?
No comments.
It's hard, it's hard to follow that guy, isn't it? Miss Morris.
Merry Christmas, Jack.
No report. No report. Ms. Reinerson?
No report, thank you.
No report, okay. Well, okay, so, we're now at citizens' comments, and nobody has signed up, but if you'd like to make a citizen comment, please raise your hand, be identified. And, no, no citizen comments then. We don't have an executive session, so if there's no objection, we can go home a little bit earlier than normal. We'll stand adjourned.